I just said you have a white square. Alright. I'm sorry. Right now. I'm trying to change my voice. I'm trying to get it. 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 Heavenly Father, as we gather together this evening, we invite you here among us. Father, we ask that you look over those affected by this senseless act in Texas only yesterday. Father, I ask that you give them comfort. Father, I ask also that we, as a people, come together, that we might please you with our thoughts and our actions. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We made two live outs to the work session this evening. Number 10 will be downtown renovation and number 11 will be fire department surplus. First, we've got to discuss change order amendment for Goose Pond walking trail extension. Mr. Mayor.
Josh, I'll let you. This is an increase from the original contract bound, 157, 248. It's an additional 67, 24, 85. And I'll let Josh explain the addition on that.
The change order is mainly for the parking lot area. The undercut had required extra riprap and drenched gray. There was a portion of the trail that required some extra riprap. So what we did, we come back and backed out the handrail and the foundation foot for the sidewalk to try to offset some of that cost. But it increased to $6,700.
The original increase was eleven, almost 12,000, but you cut some other areas to break it down to the 6,700.
Right.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
What did they bid for this project?
The bid was 157, 248.
And now what's it gonna be?
163, 972 and 85 cents.
So when we took these projects off, that we, they were in the bid, right? That we eliminated some of the projects, which reduced the amount. What, what the purpose of bidding the project? Because when we took, when we took the stuff off, this is stuff that was supposed to do part of the original price. But yet we took away some of the stuff and then yet we're giving them more money. I guess I just don't, it seems like here lately, everything we do, we end up paying more. So if I were a contractor, I would bid every project the city tries to bid and I'd do it for less than what other people are gonna bid because I know at the end I wanna ask for more money than they won't get it. So, I mean, I mean, I thought if you bid it, that's what you pay.
Well, it's not a lump sum project. It's unit price, it's last wire varies. And they do bid the lowest because they get the job, you know.
Yeah.
Well, and in the parking lot where they had to put the extra stone, when they were excavating out, they hid water.
But don't, don't they look at those things?
Well, there was some core drilling done, but I don't know that that was sufficient in that area of the parking lot.
Well, we could've took a chance and not put this in the parking lot, but, you know, six months, 18 months on road, we'd been down there, probably tearing it out.
The only thing I was concerned about was, I would think that they were gonna bid this project. They would do all of those things and make sure that what they were bidding was accurate so they wouldn't lose money. But in our case, it seems that's probably issue because we're gonna give them extra money. I just, I just thought, if I were hiring you to build me a house and you gave me a bid, how much you build a house for? That's why I expect you to build a house. And I don't know why we don't do up配, take nothing. I'm, I'm upset about it, I just don't understand something.
You better. We'll set it on next week. Next, we've got to discuss HVAC unit at Civic Center. Who's gonna go over that first, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I'll let Whitney.
Um, we have a unit at the Civic Center that the heat exchanger went out. We got an estimate on it. The estimate was for $5,180 and that was just the heat side. So we got an estimate from three different companies on just replacing the unit. The lowest was from Southern for $11,449.
Do we know how old the original unit is?
Um, I have that right there, I don't have it in here. Do you remember what I told you, Mayor?
I wanted to say it was around 13 years old.
Yeah, it was around 2003, I think, is the year that we installed it.
Is the recommendation to replace the unit?
Yes, that's the recommendation.
Any other questions? Set that for next week also. Next, does Muti code update?
Uh, we received the proof back from Muti code. You have in your packet the letter from the, showing the substantial changes and the first few pages of the code. It's over 300 pages long, so I didn't print all that out, I can email it. Um, I think, uh, send it to Mr. Kimmer to review to make sure everything looks good.
Have you got it all?
I've read all 400 and something pages. It was passed Saturday, Sunday. With various minor changes, one change I think was put in there to see if we were...
Paying attention.
Paying attention. They did that before the initial draft. I, I think it met the requirements from the discussion between I and the committee and the mayor half of the board.
Number four is discuss airport runway contract. Mr. Mayor, is that you or?
Me and Rutter.
Rutter?
Yes, sir. As you know, back in the late spring, early summer, when we bid the turnaround on the airport, it came in over budget. Uh, there's federal money and state money involved. We weren't sure what we were gonna be able to do with the project. Rutter did a lot of phone calls and discussions with the federal folks, state folks. They did come up with some additional funding, so we, per your resolution, started forward with this project. And then we run into a change order. The change order is requested by Wiregrass. If you read the resolution, it doesn't say anything about change orders. I know how you feel about change orders, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. The money had been reserved in our budget and what was in the airport fund for this project. We thought at the time the city was gonna be paying somewhere around $28,000, our portion of this, this project. That's about 650,000 total, counting federal and state money. But with the change order, it comes to 36,733. So Rutter and myself met with the new chair of the county commission and we had some discussions. And we feel very good that the county is gonna participate in this project with the city in splitting the cost of the change order for, you know, it's true economic development. So I just wanted to, I guess if you need to act on this change order or table it or, I'm not sure how you... The money is set aside where we're ending up supplementing the cost of this project with the county. I think they're, they're going through their process of approving the funds, so I wanted you to know that. So Rutter, you got anything to add?
Well, Keith brought up a good point and we had it too, is change orders. You know, if they wanna do the job, they oughta do it for what they bid for. And it was an extra amount of money that they got to do this job. Then I got a call from them and they said they couldn't finish the turnaround, that they had to go in there and dig it up. And that they, you know, it was because of all the storms, we got off the hurricane. We didn't get it, you know, I told them they didn't. And, uh, they not only said they was gonna do a change order, that they had it, the federal government in this bid allowed them to do 15% of, 15% of it. They were telling me how grateful I should be and the mayor should be and everybody should be because they only went up 15%. They, they really wanted to do it for $100,000. And then they said, we was gonna get the city to come up with $90,000 because they, the federal government was gonna come up with the 90,000 or the 84,000. I'm just saying, I need to round it off till spring. And then they said that, well, the mayor and I'd have come before the city council, get y'all to come up with the 90 for us. We told them there was no way we were gonna do that. And, uh, that, that they needed to go ahead and finish the job and get the 90, you know, in the spring. And, uh, they said they couldn't do that. I said, we'll just shut the job down, we'll get it done for what's been done because coordinating to find out that they were watering at their, where it used to be an old dump site was not hard to come up with. They said their geologist and officer said that it would pack good, but it didn't. They done a test on it after they got everything done except that spot. So, make it long for short, we gonna have to come up with the 90,000. They're gonna go ahead and finish the job. And they're gonna wait on the federal government to come up with the money at the end of the job and in March or whenever the federal government came up, can come up with that change order. I mean, it's there, but we just don't have to come up with it. But we don't have to come up with the matching funds that, on the original bid, the matching funds was 5% city, 5% state. On the change order, there's no matching funds. It's 10%, so it had to come out of the city. So we come up to like, the mayor said it was gonna be somewhere around $38,000 or 40, say, just even out money. So we went to the county and we had a meeting at the airport with mine. And we explained to him about how beneficial that this airport is, not just to the city, but to the county. And with everything that's coming in, you can't turn jets around down there on four because there's no turnaround. There's a, there's a pull-off on 2-2, but there's not on four. We have a lot of jet tracking now. We got 60 king hours a year, 40, 40 jets, and those are heavy aircraft. And, and I myself went out there with a, a, uh, what was that I was saying? It was a Buildstream 3. And the pilots asked me if they could turn around in it because we had 14 people forward. We were gonna take off on runway four. We couldn't go to 2-2 because with the weight that they had in there, just with 14 people, not counting fuel, they needed a headwind. The wind was coming out of northeast, we gotta take off on runway four. He turned that sucker around down there and I mean, there wasn't an, wasn't an angel on his side to keep that airplane on the runway. And he did, but even after he got turned around, it took 500 feet of usable runway that was behind him. You know, runway behind you, you can't use, you can't put it in reverse. We needed all the runway we could, but he hit the afterburners on that thing, we should ever win that Scotch Pro that time. But I said that, say this, it's real beneficial what mayorship and, and the airport board are, are getting done at there right now to our long-range forecast with, with plants that are coming in here, you know, and with the jet track that we have. This has to be done and this is something we got approved and then they were just gonna hold up on it tomorrow, so they're not, now it's gonna get done. Talking, we, we've talked with mine, like I said, and he's not only, the mayor and I talked to him, not just to come up with the 5% for this change order. We went ahead and asked him if he would do, participate in the 5% that you gotta come up with plus the 5% on change order, which is gonna split $38,000 in half and stood up having 20,000 and 9,000, which would've been over 30,000 that we had come up with without no help. And he's poked all the commissioners and he said he got 100% okay with it.
So, uh, Mr. Waiver, this is, this, these monies are already in the 28, 27, 18 budget, correct? It was not, it would not require a budget amendment?
No, it shouldn't. When we went to the budget, remember, $12,000 in the airport fund? And that was gonna take care of that 28,000 dollars that we was gonna have to come up with. So we should have enough money in there to take care of that.
Plus the change order.
Plus the change order.
And with the change order, what we got the commission, it was gonna be less. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor.
It's gonna be less money on the city with them participating than it would've been if they, if it'd been all out of pocket on us.
So do you mean our authorization for us to disperse funds or what's the action that are your questions?
We've got, we've got money reserved, but I want you to be aware that this project was, had a change order and it cost them more money than it originally planned.
Thank you, Rutter.
Okay.
I'm sorry, anybody else here? Number five is veteran field updates. Mr. Olney, so you gonna handle that?
Yes, Jim. Come on, this is your turn. Uh, in your package, you've got an allowance, a veterans' field project. You make that.
There you go, Jim.
Anyway, there's been a lot of back and forth. There has been change orders, there's been several deductions, there's been some additions. And Jim and I have talked about this during, I mean, we all got crossways more than once and we were all on the same page several times, but I think overall, you know, we, Jim will explain, we come in under budget.
The summary sheet is there on the front and in, the forecast is 2.11 million. The original budget approved by the council was 2.4. So that's $287,000 overrun. Included in that 287,000, there's an additional $5,000 of contingency funds. So the, the overrun analysis, how did we, how do we save that much money? Well, $114,000 was prior to the beginning of construction and during the early stages of construction, identification of cost-saving items for elimination or modification. And there's a list of them there. One of the first things we looked at was the design of the backstop posts, a rather, anyway, very unusual design. And that was eliminated after discussions with the fence contractor, that saved a whole bunch of money. Collectively, all of those nine or 10 items was a savings of $114,000. $75,000 was a direct result of the aggressive approach that the team took. And I'd say the team, that's Toler Construction, CTS excavation, the Geotech engineer and myself. When we identified problems with the soil and we knew where there was gonna be some, the contract had $94,000 as an allowance for fixing that soil. So rather than just digging to China, deeper you got, the more water you got. We got the Geotech engineer out there early in the job as we identified these places. We, we identified a fix, we spent some money bringing some big rock in so that we minimize the amount of digging of the bad dirt that we had to take out. And ultimately, of the $94,000, we saved $75,000 of that allowance. We didn't spend it, did not spend it all. $35,000 was dugout covers. The original budget had some dugout covers included in there and those were, those were, I guess, contracted covers. Nothing fancy, but, you know, you go online and you see where people come in and they, they put a framework and they put a rather simple cover over the dugouts. By getting with the fence contractor, we saved $35,000 with the covers that the fence contractor installed. The $17,000, the Scotch Pro electric power board did a fantastic job. What they did saved the city a tremendous amount of money because if that had been contracted out, the power board did that essentially, their contractor was for, their estimate was for $94,000. They did it for like 77,000. Contractor would be at least twice that, at least twice that. And they were always out there, they were timely, they did the work well and it's, it's a real tribute to the power board, the folks that worked there, what they have done for the city. Really wanna rec, you know, give them a recommendation. There was contingency in the original budget that I submitted to the council. One of the things on construction contracts, even though everything is fixed, you got firm prices, you got different bids, there's changes that happen. And the reason changes are happening because you find conditions that are different from what the contract bid or something doesn't fit right because of something else that happened. Those are part of every construction contract. That's why when I submitted the budget to the council, I had a 10% contingency on most of the items because I knew that would happen. That's, that's going to happen. So there was 150,000 or so of contingency and 46,000 of that was not used. So collectively, that's an overrun of $287,000, which now then can be used by the mayor and the council to do other capital projects. That's where we are right now. The, the project, the second page is, is a summary. There's a lot of pieces in that. The total contract ain't only one of those pieces. 1.5 million approximately, that's about two-thirds of the, of the three point, of the 2.1, maybe 75%. The architect, the city has some items, there's some items to be, that remain to be done on the punch list. And until those punch list items are done, then the retention is held by the city. But the facility is substantially complete. That's a term used in contract terms, the facility is useful. If we wanted to play baseball there at the city, we could. But of course, that won't be until next spring when the grass and everything is all settled. So as a contractor finishes these punch list items, once it all finished, the architect will do a final inspection. Myself and the mayor and other city representatives will do that too before the 70-something thousand dollars of retention money is released. So that all is remaining to be done there. Everything else is finished and then the, the city will be purchasing items during the next few months like benches for the dugouts, some made equipment that's included in the budget for the conception building, things of that nature. So that's, that's a summary where we are. It's, it was, I think, a very good project in the, in the fact that it was a lot of real good teamwork. I was able to contact the mayor and we were able to make decisions in a timely manner to keep the project moving and minimize any additional costs. Because time is money to a contractor. When you stop to work because you're waiting on a decision, you know, that, that begins to impact, impact work, impact money and working relationships. We didn't have any of that. And I think that's a tribute to the, to Toler and all the folks that, so the power board, all the folks that have worked on this.
Couple of things I wanna mention. On the second page, under the city items, there's field equipment miscellaneous, 30,000 pavilion, 30,000. The field equipment miscellaneous is what Jim's talking about, which includes some soil conditioner they're having to purchase, benches, sand, etc. Just a lot of miscellaneous items. One thing that early on, when the city was looking to, I guess, try to get the project in line, there is a cooking pavilion with utilities that was there and it was like $54,000 for the cooking pavilion. It was essentially eliminated as we were whittling and doing. But what we are proposing, because the project we built on is, is under budget, is the city, we had looked at, instead of the one cooking pavilion being contracted out, the city with us contracting out the labor and furnishing all the materials, we could, we've got a budget price to build four pavions for $30,000 in this.
And that is, that's included in the forecast?
That's in that forecast amount, yes, 2.1 million.
I will say I've been contacted by some civic organizations that may have an interest in sponsoring a pavilion there.
Once we get them built, I think, yeah. And I, I wanna follow up what, what Jim said about the electric power board. They did, you know, we bought the lights from Musco and then the power board installed. And then Jim contacted Musco to come back and do their, I don't know the technical term, make sure they're shining where they're supposed to shine. They came out, did their test and he sent an email back and, and number one, he said this park was one of the top parks. And he travels all over the southeast doing Musco lighting, one of the top parks in the southeast. And he also said the work by the electric power board was second to none and Musco would like to contract them out. So it was, you know, very complimentary of the facility, the complex and, and their work.
Any questions or comments? Jim, I'd just like to thank you for the work that you put into this, to this project.
He's earned his dollar and mine.
Well, I enjoy it. Anything I can do to help the city, I'm always available.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, sir. Next, we have discussed BB Comber Bridge structure. You have in your packet a letter from Mr. Ball directed to Mayor Shelton requesting the piece. I assume, Mayor, that they have gone through their engineering.
They have and in the last sheet in that, under his email, the state building commission signed off on the project this morning and he sent me an email with that. So they have done, I think, the requirements that the council was needing prior to receiving ownership of this structure.
We'll put that on next week, Jim.
Alright, thank you.
Discuss requiring liability insurance for all contractors. Is this amendment to, oh, this is a, not a municipal, municipality's code?
Yes, it's Athens.
Is this what you're suggesting, we, we're after?
May, we have been, over the course of the, since August, been meeting with contractors and realtors and trying to get feedback. Us and Water, Sewer, Gas and Electric Power Board have been meeting, all building, apartment, Josh, myself, just having some open meetings discussing what we can do to, to improve being a builder-friendly city. We've had four meetings, two in August, one in September. We've had four meetings, two in August, one in September and one in October with different groups. Another one is scheduled for November. But the number one thing that comes out of every meeting we've had, all four, is that they feel like that the city, I guess, they just want to level playing field, all the different contractors, so that when they bid jobs, it's, I guess, a more competitive or a level playing field. And the city of Scottsboro does not require general liability insurance for contractors that get a business license, whether it be plumbing, electrical, whatever, whatever it is, dirt work, et cetera. And so we've checked around and we've got a copy of Athens requirements that when they get a business license, that they do have proof of a general liability insurance. And so I'm asking y'all to consider this. This is directly from feedback from business owners here and it's something that just protects the person they're doing the work for as much as anything. Got to hear your discussion.
Okay. I'm going to set this for the next work session, also to give us time to
Sure.
to look at it and ask the city attorney to peruse it and give us some more back.
I just, if we do, or if you do take action on something like this, we'd just like to get it in place before the next calendar year rolls around and business licenses are required.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discuss resolution for one-time pay raise for employees. Is this the one that we do every year?
Yes, thanks.
So we do this every, every year. Anybody have any questions concerning that? We'll set that for next week's agenda. Announce vacancy on downtown redevelopment authority. Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Gene Watkins has resigned from the downtown redevelopment authority. His term expires October two thousand twenty-two. Anyone interested should apply and run into the city parks office by Monday, November
We added to the agenda this evening, downtown renovation. You have in your packets explanation of change orders that were, that were found during the downtown renovation project. Josh, you or Mr. Mayor want to kind of give us a breakdown on what the change orders were and the purpose of them?
I don't have it front of me. One of the change orders was the The biggest change order was the concrete sidewalk that was more to be removed and estimated on the plans. And then the unclamped plate excavation was a big item and that was due to the south entrance of the tree coming out and we had to dig that out with the new drive wind. That was about eight thousand dollars. The back of the crushed ag and the riprap in that was a change order. And then the curb and gutter, we replaced more of it than what was estimated on the And then the copper, that was a big change order on that, running the copper in the meter box to the building front. That was about fifteen thousand dollars on that.
I may add, it was, you know, twenty-three property owners that were affected when they replaced the meter boxes, water park with seven new meters. It was still galvanized going into the building. There was a field decision made to replace it with copper. That was, like I said, it was about sixteen thousand dollars for the twenty-three different property owners.
Did I hear you say there was more sidewalk taken out? How did we have sidewalk to be taken out? I mean, the sidewalk was there. I mean, I guess I don't understand that.
It was on the end.
Did they film measures or what?
Well, when we did the survey, I think it come up to sixty-eight hundred square yards and we ended up moving seventy-two hundred square yards. So we're about five hundred square yards at thirteen dollars per yard.
When we say they estimated six?
CDG engineers.
How much of it is CDG kicking in? Is this their mistake? And what did we pay CDG?
I don't know. I don't have that book. What, you said a field decision? What did you say about a field decision made or something?
When they were doing the copper lines versus galvanized.
They made that decision.
I guess a collaborative effort between Josh and the state and
Water, Sewer, Gas.
Water, Sewer, Gas. I mean, we could have, that should have stopped.
I think Water, Sewer, Gas, they could have pulled the thirty thousand dollars project in.
You know, I guess CDG approved it, dollars. It would have been nice if we'd just been told at that, how you get this problem and what I've changed. And I guess that's where it seemed like we're losing a lot of our working together thing or we're the only ones that we left out of all this. We just like another.
Thank you, Josh. Anybody else have any questions? And next, this fire department surplus. You remember a few weeks ago, the chief had some air packs, right?
Yes, sir. I'll be as quick as I can. Last work session, I believe, we actually had a hundred and three items, all but eleven of those were air packs. Those eleven that weren't were just going to be disposed of as we typically do. So the question came in with the air packs and how many pieces that is. It's actually forty units and then each unit has a harness and two bottles, so that's why the numbers are a little different. That's why it sounds like there's a lot more than forty. But they're actually forty. So question was brought up. I recommended that we offer these to the county volunteer departments that have reduced, significantly reduced rate, aside from rebuild. And question was asked about possibly donating. So I reached out to, through the email, through the world email, the Jackson County Volunteer Association and asked them, you know, if they would be interested in them and not or how many or what have you. I only got four responses, which is, how many I got, so is what it is. Out of those four, and I could, I could tell them to, but it's really irrelevant who they were, Hollywood, Scott and I would will hightown not to commit any of those people to anything so they would all be willing to purchase these at two hundred dollars a unit and would like to have five or ten. Obviously, they also would be glad to take them for nothing too. So with that, that's the report I got back. I still stick with my recommendation of offering to them at a discounted rate, partly because I don't want to decide who gets how many for nothing and partly frankly because I'd like to use some of that money to put towards training our new hires that are coming up over the next year.
Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
We'll move to delegations. There are none. We'll move to reports. Mr. Mayor?
Just one thing, and I think we did put it in your packet. Benny, I was contacted by the bind and foundation Friday about some adjacent properties that they own next to Cedar Field Cemetery and they have proposed, you'll see what they've proposed in your packet, for eighteen acres, offering to the city, I guess, basically at a discounted price. It's something, I guess, if you're looking at future growth for Cedar Field and working with the binding foundation, it's just in here for information purposes and then we'll proceed as y'all see fit.
This property is adjacent to Cedar Field Cemetery, right?
Yes, it connects.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Butler? Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Yeah, with Jim and the baseball fields and all that, just want to thank him. Appreciate you for everything that you've done, helping us through all that. And then Yvonne, do you want to tell everybody about the state tournaments that you got or was it the eighth, tenth and twelfth?
Had eight, tenth and twelfth, and we got six through the last.
So we already have some state tournaments lined up.
But several travel tournaments already scheduled.
And I want to thank Yvonne and Brian for coordinating that and getting that right because that's gotten really competitive over the past few years, as we've found out. And it's good that we were able to do that and get those ears up. Want to thank you all for that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Gary Stewart?
Yeah, me too. Yvonne, they did, you all did a very good job on the bid packages and I thought that turned out really well. And I just really appreciate everybody coming tonight and I look forward to seeing you next week.
Mr. Smith?
Hello.
I don't have anything either. We'll stand, stand adjourned until next week.